That's, you know, we're wanting to then discuss this whether or not amongst us that we're going to try to appoint or, you know, and give staff and you clear understanding of Atherton. So, are there any other public comments? And if not, I'd like to bring it back to council members for discussion and input about these. What I see are basically three options. We have 60 days to appoint, that is from July 1st to August 29th or 30th. We had to call a special election by July 15th because that was the 114 days from the November 5th timeframe. So that's ticking. Candidates have from July 15th to August 9th to file. They have, that's their filing period. We have the option, if we so choose, to keep our appointment process going until August 30th. And the appointed person can only serve the entire remaining term, no portion of any terms. So, based on that, Councilmember Dobbie?
Well, my feeling is very simple. Unless one of the council members or more of the council members has decided to change the vote from the last time, I'd say we just go with the election.
My input is as follows. First off, the reason we set the election was as the mayor and the city attorney had pointed out, that the time was against us and if we hadn't done the establishment for calling for the special election, we'd been potentially up till next June before we had an election and probably July before somebody got seated. And that would really be inappropriate, I think, because we have a lot of important things on our plate, one of which would be the development of next year's budget because that's how long we'd be talking. So, we did the prudent thing and the best thing, I think, in the interest of the town. We asked for people's input and just to kind of see who was interested as opposed to picking names out of the air. And we were fortunate that seven very qualified people, some known to us, some not known to us, sent in their application. And they each had five minutes to tell us all about themselves and we had time to read their resumes, but we really didn't get a chance to know them. And so it would be very difficult unless you really knew somebody very well to say, "Okay." And in fact, I think we all said that we were very, very impressed with all of the people. But, you know, we made a choice based on where we were at the time and of course, there was a difference of opinion and actually there was even some reluctance to even vote for, on some people's part, which actually had a lot of validity. I would like to hold the option open that we, you know, because of the time, people have to file. And I think that that's, I think that that's prudent. And, but I, but I think that the option of us deciding something over the next month is probably something that the town and the council should consider. So I wouldn't want to lose that option. We have that option. Do we have to exercise it? No, but I, but I'm not willing at this point in time to say that I would, I would like to give away that option. And I think it would be prudent for all of us to at least consider it. And it would give us time to get to know a couple of the candidates or if there might be another name that's been pointed out that comes up that everybody says they're in agreement with. So, I'd like to keep the option open. That's my point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I'm going to echo Councilman Dobbie's comments related to calling for an election. I think it's in all fairness to the people that have applied that are showing the interest and to wait another rough 30 days or so. It's a agonizing period to wait, not knowing what we're going to do. And if we can make a decision this evening to call for an election, you will know and we'll all know in the council chambers will be, you know, another place to get public input and we want to hear about it. But I think it's a, it's, it's easy for me. It's right where I think we should have been in the first place and calling for the election just says it all.
Okay. So what I'm hearing our council members talk about is waiting for, just going forward with the election, seeing who files and maybe holding another meeting at the end of the filing period to see who's filed to then maybe appoint someone?
Well, that's what, that's what I would recommend. I'm not advocating, you know, having the, the period of time when people close, you know, when the, when the filing date is closed, when they would want to start campaigning and making, making their plans and raising money and things like that for whatever they need to do, that we would hold them out for, for three additional weeks and then say, "Ah, well, we think we're going to appoint somebody," and that's all for not. That's not fair. And, and so I think we need to be conscious of that timing as well, so.
So we're talking, you, what you're talking about is August 9th and this is August, this is July 17th. Is that two weeks, three weeks from now? August 9th is the end of the filing period?
Three weeks.
Is that three weeks, two weeks from now? Then, and then to hold another special meeting to come back and discuss and say, depending upon who's filed for candidacy, to see who's filed to run for the special election?
And decide if we want to.
Or just let it go?
Yeah, I can see that that would be, you know, a quick, a quick meeting. If that's all, it wouldn't be interviews or anything like that. It might be a quick discussion and that's it.
Yeah.
I think that that would be.
Does that make sense?
Yeah. I, I'm going to tell you, it just seems unfair to any of the applicants. I mean, you're in, you're ready to run, you want to do it, you're ready to go. I mean, we have the option of dropping the flag now, let's go, get in the game, anxiety over. I, I just think that it's just not fair to the applicants, you know, to hold you out for another three weeks. It's just where I am.
I agree with Councilmember Wees. I think we're just wasting time here. So as far as I'm concerned, we should just decide right now that we're going for an election. We always have the option, even if we decide to go for the election. Something happens during the period between now and August 9th, we always have the option. So let's not, you know, make a meal out of this. It's, this is, you know, it's going too far.
Councilmember Dobbie, in all due respect, I think that to keep it open as our option just kind of keeps a level of uncertainty in the equation. And I would like to eliminate that element of uncertainty as to, well, what is the council going to do now? You know, they say they're going for an election and, but they're going to, you know, at any moment, they may just appoint somebody on a whim or on, you know, that may not even be any of the applicants.
Can't be on the whim of three people.
Well, excuse me. Not on a whim, but, you know, but without a process. So I think that we need to, you know, make a clear process roadmap here so that everybody knows what we're going to expect from us.
If you want to have another meeting on this, I'm not going to vote against it, but I think it's totally unnecessary.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Let me see if I can clarify this. We have a process. We have called for an election within the 60-day period. Unless three people vote to change that process, that's your process. I believe it would take three people tonight to say we're deviating from that process by holding open the ability to appoint. And if you think about it, it's not free to file and you do have to go out and get signatures and you do, and if people are going to start campaigning in earnest, there is an unfairness that could be argued by just leaving it open and not doing something. If you're, if you want to leave it open and there's at least a majority that say that's a good idea, I think that would change the process and to leave it open. But if you don't leave it open, we have selected within that 60 days and that is, at the last meeting, we selected going forward with, called for the election.
Well, if I could comment on that, I'm sorry. Normally you would have the 60 days and then you would make a decision and it gives you some time to, to consider what you want to do. You know, because of where this resignation occurred in the time cycle and because we have to tie into one of the special, you know, the preset elections, we're bound, we were bound to set the criteria for the November election and the timetable and the setbacks required us to do two things in one night. And really, I think that we're, we're short-circuiting the process somewhat and, and we might be missing a process, you know, might be missing a, potentially a good, a good appointee. So my, my plea to my fellow council members is that, look, I, I'm not interested in putting, putting upon anyone that who's filing or has pulled papers and the effort it's taking to do it. We all know what that takes. But there normally is a process that allows us to have 60 days to decide what we want to go do and then we set and call for the special election. And we did the two things, you know, kind of together because of necessity and because of consideration that that's the best thing to do, that was the best thing to do at that time for the, for the community and still is. Today, we did the right thing, I'm sure, but I prefer that we not give up this right to just have one, one last discussion on it. We don't have to have the meeting. The mayor has to call the special meeting, but that's my input. No, no, I'll be quiet.
And I just, I would say that, based on our attorney's advice, I would not vote to change anything we've already done.
So let me just summarize that. What the attorney says, that the process that's just in play right now is that we've called for a special election as of July 15th. We failed to nominate, appoint, a replacement. We have the remaining 60 days, which is until August 29th or August 30th to appoint. That is the options in front of us. Personally, I feel that that is unfair if a candidate is pulling papers and starting the election, the campaign process to wait until August 29th or August 30th, even though legally we are allowed that flexibility. If we were going to retain the option to appoint, the latest that I would agree to would be around the August 9th close of the filing period. I would not go any farther than that, just in case someone wanted to file on the last day or whatever, but I would not go past that. And I'm still struggling with whether or not that is even fair for people who are going to file tomorrow or, you know, next week and then have two to three weeks of kind of lost time campaigning. And then if we decide to appoint. So I think that that's kind of a courtesy of, you know, politics is not easy.
Madam Mayor, I think you've summarized it pretty well. Let me see if I can clarify something you said there. What I'm saying is, tonight, if three of you say, "We were going to hold it open for appointment to some or all in 60 days," then yes, you can do that. That's giving everybody that's, that would have to file by the night, it gives them fair warning that you're still considering appointing. If you don't get the, a majority vote tonight, I believe you have exercised one of your two options under the government code. You have in fact, set the election and you haven't appointed somebody. And I think that I would feel uncomfortable going forward after that and then, you know, after people file and had their names out there, then magically reopening it and saying, "King's X, we're not going to call for the election, we're going to go back and do something else." That's a little bit different than what you said. If in fact, the council says, "We're going to hold it open," I think that's okay. But if you don't hold it open.
We let them know. That's, that's what we're trying to do.
If you don't, and if you don't, I think that the decision has been, been made and the election goes forward.
I'll make a motion that we do not change. The decisions that were made at last council meeting regarding the election or appointment of candidates. And therefore, the motion which was made previously was that we would go for an election and I want to have that now as the new motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
Can I have a little discussion about that? Because your motion seemed to include two parts of it, that we will go forward with the election, but retain the option to appoint.
No option to appoint.
With no option to appoint. So just decide right here, right now, that we're going to go forward with the election. So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
I've said what I think and, you know, I, I do believe that, to, to the point that you've made, Madam Mayor, and to what Bill said, I do think it's, it's fair that we wouldn't have a meeting past the 9th or the following Monday, the 12th. You know, so that if somebody was going to start in earnest with, with campaigning, of course, you can't put signs up till September, but, you know, they have to make investments and things like that and plans. And I think that that's, it would be unethical potentially, could be deemed as that and unfair by the council to, to wait to the last minute after they've made investments. But, you know, I don't like to lose my options. And if I had known that we would have, if that was the option, then maybe we wouldn't have voted to hold the election, you know. I mean, I think that the 60 days is, is set for you to get to know potential candidates and, and decide if, if one of them is the right one, because it is only a year possession. So, I, I would like to keep the option open.
I would like to vote on motion.
Well, we're going to call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm against that, but you understood that.
I did, I did. And I changed my mind. So, what we've just decided is that we will call for an election, we will not appoint. Thank you all very much for your interest in serving. It seems like the fair thing to do at this point is to allow the residents of Atherton the opportunity to choose the next council member to replace Jared Carlson and we'll go forward and look towards November. So thank you all very much for your interest and for being here tonight. Okay. So, we'll go on with the next item, which would be item number 13. It's going to be the presentation by True North, the research in regards to the whole parcel tax polling survey.
Yeah, I'll, I'll slow play my introduction for you that way. For it to be ready. Good evening, Mayor and Members of Council. I'm Dr. Tim McCarney. I'm the President, True North Research. And we're a firm that specializes in working with California cities as well as other public agencies around the state to develop a statistically reliable understanding of the communities they serve through survey research. My business partner and I, together as a two-person team, have worked on over 800 studies for public agencies and about 300 of those studies were what we call revenue measure feasibility studies, which are similar to the, the research that we're going to be talking about here tonight. And the objective of those studies is really to understand if a potential tax measure or bond is feasible, meaning does it have a reasonable chance of being successful? And if so, how would you go about structuring that measure in a way that it's consistent with what the voters in the community would want to see and ultimately is positioned while it'll be successful on election day? Should I lean back? We've to date raised about $22 billion in successful local measures. And the reason I mention that in our experience is because as I go through tonight's presentation and talk about the results of the parcel tax renewal survey, I might make reference to how the patterns that we're seeing here in Atherton might compare to what we typically see with other cities or other agencies that are looking at potential tax measures. And so I wanted you to have a sense for our experience. Also, tonight's presentation covers the highlights of the study. There's a more detailed full report that provides some additional details, which we won't be talking about tonight. And also, as I go through tonight's presentation, I will welcome questions from council as I go or at the end, whichever is your preference.
You can push your own button and take this.
Happy to do that.
Yeah, not while you're getting blinded.
I can see. Before I talk about the results, it's probably helpful to review the purpose of the study as well as the methodology or how we went about doing about this study. This is what we call revenue measure feasibility study. You know, it's designed to do is really three things. The first is to answer that simple question about, is it feasible? Now, when I say is it feasible, what I mean by that is if council chooses to place a measure on an upcoming ballot, does it have a reasonable chance of being successful? You might imagine the answer to that question isn't always yes. Sometimes we do these types of studies and we get the data back and there's really no way to get you from where you are today to where you need to be to be successful on election day. And when that's the case, we're very frank about that, because there's a lot of effort and investment that goes into choosing to place a measure on ballot, communicating with your public, et cetera, that if your measure really doesn't have a reasonable chance of success, you might want to consider other options rather than moving forward. In the case that you do have feasibility, the second overarching goal of this research is really to help us understand how you go about packaging this measure or structuring it in a way that's going to be consistent with your community's priorities, such that when they see it on the ballot, there is going to be something that they want to support. And there's a lot of things that go into a measure package. In some cases, the tax rate, in bonds, it's the aggregate bond amount, what are you going to spend money on, the plan? All of these things are things that your community has opinions about and so the goal of the study is to help us understand what those opinions are. And then finally, is to gather information that's needed for communications and outreach. And what I mean by that is, when an agency chooses to place a measure on a ballot, I also think that it's incumbent upon them to help educate their community about the choice that they're asking them to make. Right, so you don't put the measure up on the ballot and simply walk away. You have to be able to help them understand what the situation is, why you're choosing to put this measure on the ballot and ultimately what it's going to hopefully accomplish. Okay. In terms of the methodology, just a fancy word for how we went about doing this study, we did things a little differently here in Atherton than we normally would. And typically, when we do these types of revenue measure surveys, we rely solely on telephone interviewing for data collection. And in Atherton, we kind of knew going into it that that wasn't going to work. And it wasn't going to work for two reasons. Number one, you're a very small town, right? So there's just not a lot of people to be able to, to interview to begin with. And number two, you're an affluent town. And in my experience, when you combine those, those two things together, it makes for extremely difficult terrain for trying to reach people by phone, because it's just hard to reach them. It's hard to get them to, to participate in a phone survey by itself. And I figured at the end of this process, if we did just phone, we'd be lucky to squeeze 200 interviews out of the town. So we used what's known as a mixed methodology, where we chose all the likely voters in your community and we mailed them an invitation letter, which invited them to participate in a survey online at their convenience. Or if they chose, we would also call back through. And that way, not only did they have the chance to go online by themselves, they also knew when we called, we could reference the letter and it, and it connected. And by using this combined mixed methodology, we were able to interview 514 residents out of the community, which is about 114 more than I expected as the high end. And so we had a really good response to the survey, especially given the community at this size. Now, given that it's a sampling of your likely voters and not a census, and has what's known as a margin there due to sampling, in this case, it's about plus or minus 4%. That means the results we are talking about tonight, we can be 95% confident that they're within 4% of what we would have found had we spoken with all of your likely voters. And I will say this, we chose likely November 2014 voters as the large voter universe for the purposes of sampling, but within that nested, you have your likely November 2013 universe, which is this upcoming election, it's a smaller turnout. November 2014 is about 3,500 voters. November 2013 is about half that, it's about 1,700 voters. And so when we look at the data, we can not only look at it for next November, we could filter it and look at it for this November as well. And I'll just say at the outset, the results are very, very similar between the two universes. So although these results are based on November 2014, they map very closely to what we found when we just isolated November 2013 voters. Okay. So to begin the survey, we asked a few warm-up questions, one of which was how they would rate the overall quality of life in Atherton. Would they say it's excellent, good, fair, poor, and very poor? As you can see here on the slide, residents have a very positive opinion of quality life in town. You had 60% who said excellent, 33% who said good. I usually like to combine those when I talk about this things, these, this question. You have 93% in S M two who said excellent or good. You had 5% who said poor. Not a single respondent said poor or very poor with respect to the quality of life and about 1% were unsure.
How many people was that, 1%? Five people said they weren't sure?
The 1%, yeah, about five people.
Right. We need to send them a lot.
These results were also really consistent when you looked at it across subgroups. I mean, for tonight's presentation, I'm focusing on the overall results. In the report, you can see how this breaks down by how long they've lived in town, age, gender, partisanship, all these things. And these results were quite similar across your various subgroups. So everybody had a positive opinion. We went on also to ask them overall, generally speaking, are you satisfied or dissatisfied with the job the town in Atherton is doing to provide municipal services? Because we didn't reference a specific service or facility and we specifically asked them to, to consider the town's performance in general, this could be considered an overall performance rating for the town. And what you find is you have 82% of residents who said they were satisfied with town's efforts to provide municipal services. You had about 13% who said they were dissatisfied and about 4% who were unsure. Again, the positive findings that you see here were, were really consistent across subgroups. There wasn't a single subgroup that had less than 70% who said that they were satisfied with the city's efforts to provide or the town's efforts to provide municipal services. Now, for the record, we do this type of research in terms of overall performance rating for cities all over the state, from cities like Oakland, East Palo Alto, to Beverly Hills, to Indian Wells, so the whole range. And I have seen the score be as high as 97%. I've seen it in the 40s. So you get an understanding of where 82% is still on the upper end of that scale. At this point, we transitioned right now to sort of the meat of the survey, where we're talking about the parcel tax. And this is what we call our initial ballot test and we purposely put this read early in the poll. So before we start talking in more detail about what the measure would fund, arguments pro and con, et cetera, we wanted to present to them a mock-up of what that roughly 75-word ballot statement might look like and get their opinion. It's a really good gauge of where your community is at today on the national with respect to the proposed parcel tax renewal. You'll note that it says here that it's not going to raise the parcel tax, so it's what's called a no tax increase extension, where you're not raising the tax rate, but you're extending it for six years. And the results you see shown here, right out of the gates, you had 75% of likely voters in the community say that they would support this parcel tax renewal. You had about 19% who were unsure. You had about 5% who, I'm sorry, you had about 19% who were opposed and about 5% who were unsure.
That's consistent.
And what's interesting about this also is it's pretty widespread support. Right out of the gates again initially, you had more than a majority, you had a majority or greater support in every single identified subgroup, including groups that are traditionally anti-tax like Republicans. If you look at the Republican partisanship, oh, you isolate Republicans and you still have a majority support for this. And what's interesting is as the interview goes on, the differences across where we would normally in other communities. the difference is across where we would normally, in other communities, see pretty big spreads of support for a measure like this based on partisanship, for example. You don't see that in Atherton in the same way for this particular measure. The other thing I'll also say is, it's really not common in the work that we do to have two-thirds support on the national. Typically, when you look at measures that are two-thirds, that require two-thirds support, when you do an initial ballot test, if you're going to have feasibility, you tend to check in sort of high 50s, low 60s, so you're below that mark. And it's only through additional information and outreach that you wind up reaching the two-thirds mark. What's encouraging about these results is, again, right out of the gates, based on that parcel tax and it's a no tax increase extension, you have 75%. So that's an extremely good place to start one of these types of measures. Now, one of the things we also anticipate is that some voters may not be aware that the parcel tax has been in place for the most part of several decades. And that, or that the cost, it costs the typical parcel in the community about $750 per year. So we wanted to relay that information as part of this survey. And then also reiterate that the proposed measure would not increase that $750 tax rate. It would simply extend it out into the future another six years. And when we, we asked that, we said, okay, now that you've heard this, where do you stand? And I had to flip back and forth to see the difference between these two because they're almost identical, right? You still have 75% support overall. You have 19% who were opposed, 5% who were unsure. And the only, what's interesting is that the intensity of the vote on the yes actually ticks up about 3%. So very stable. That information didn't really change the aggregate vote. All it did was strengthen the definitely yes vote a little bit. Now, individuals who said that they would not support this measure at that, that last question, were asked in an open-ended way, is there a particular reason why you don't support this measure? And we asked this question because we want to understand, are we going to see the typical reasons, the anti-tax reasons that we normally see with opponents of tax measures? Or is there something unique that pops up in this community about why they're not supporting that measure, which you want to be aware of before you choose to place a measure on the ballot? And what we see here, in fact, it's an open-ended question, which means they can tell us anything they want. We record the verbatims and then we review them and we group them into categories you see here on the slide. And what we're seeing here is very, very typical of what we see in other communities. When someone says they don't want to vote for a tax measure, the number one reason is usually always taxes are already too high or the perception that taxes are already too high. Some concern about, you know, the need to better manage your budget or government overspending. And then you have about 14% that didn't want to get an answer. About 10% said, I just need more information. So there's nothing in this list of reasons for why those, that minority of folks who were opposing, there's nothing in this list that, that is sort of red flag.
I'm going to, I responded to this and I said, I thought we spent too much money on lawyers. What do you think so?
You know, that didn't, that didn't bubble up.
I said the same thing.
I said the same thing.
That's where the .6 comes in.
How many people are .6%?
Oh my gosh.
Like two.
Yeah. And keep in mind, and that's only of the percentage of people, that's of the 19% of people who oppose, right?
Oh, .6% of 19.
Of 19%. Maybe it was yours. All right. Now, at this point, we, we transitioned to what we call our proposed project section. And the idea here is really twofold. The first is now to start to educate those respondents more about what this measure will accomplish. Up till this point, they only had that 75-word ballot statement. You can only pack so many things into 75 words. And so here, we get to unpack that into all the different potential services and projects that can be funded by this parcel tax renewal. And that helps them understand more about the measure you're asking them about. It's also an opportunity for us to understand what your community's priorities are with respect to how this money would be spent if they had their way. And we asked them for each of these, we simply say, if the measure passes, would you favor or oppose continuing to use some of the money to, insert blank, or do you not have an opinion? And we sorted them here based on the percentage who said they either, they favored spending money on that item either strongly or somewhat. And what you see is there's kind of two tiers in this slide. At the top of the list, the top tier, you have repairing and maintaining all the streets and roads, followed by maintaining quick responses to 911 emergencies, repairing, improving storm drains and flood control, which is kind of surprising to me personally, and then provide police and crime protection services. Those four items rose to the top of that list. There's nothing on this list that isn't popular necessarily, but you can see that those ones sort of stand out from the rest. And then you have, you know, some more generically worded, making capital infrastructure improvements, for example. Probably the only item on there that you might really have some discussion about improving COVID enforcement, that wasn't wildly popular. I didn't, not that people don't like COVID enforcement, but when you're asking them, how should we spend the parcel tax proceeds? The other thing is they see a high priority in that.
Yeah, but 56%, that's still a picture, right?
Yeah. So it's not that it's unpopular.
Yeah, we only have, we only have a guy out one day.
I mean, one of the items here that surprises me in a way is ensure that the town is prepared for emergencies. And that should be advice to us because we don't spend much money on that item.
Good job, Scott.
Flood, flood control is also an interesting one. It's probably the, it's one of those items that, you know, people tend to look at their own street or their own house and think, okay, do I have flooding issues? If yes, then I'm going to support that. If no, then I'm not. Here, it garnered more support on this list than I, than I thought it might.
We have problems with flooding, you know, to be honest. Because we don't have storm drains throughout, so.
The majority of it's flat and no storm.
And there's no storm.
Just roads, roads, yeah.
All right, that makes sense. Now, if council chooses to place a measure on the ballot, there's going to be an election cycle. And during that election cycle, you're going to have individuals and perhaps an independent campaign on behalf of this measure standing up and, and trying to convince their neighbors and the community at large as to why they should support this measure, right? That they should argue on his behalf. You might also have opponents of the measure who stand up and do the same thing with the goal of, of actually causing the measure to fail and convincing their neighbors to oppose it. For this to be an accurate revenue measure feasibility study, we need to know not only where are your voters today, which we saw in that initial ballot test, we need to be able to expose them to the type of debate that they're going to likely encounter during that election cycle, understand how once they hear these arguments, pro and con, might...